Welcome to the January 2017 School Board Meeting. Adequate notice that this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 4th, 2017, and by posting the notice in the Fork River Post Office and the Lenoa Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Forgot to first call for, yeah. I give a motion to close private session, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing as none, we'll close that. I'll go back again. Welcome to the 2017, January 2017, Lacey Township School Board Meeting. Adequate notice, this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 4th, 2017, and by posting the notice in the Fork River Post Office and the Lenoa Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Please join me in a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Turn it to page nineteen, uh, eighteen. I have a motion or move that the board approve the minutes of the reorganization meeting held on January 2nd, 2017.
Move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Essenza?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
I have a motion that the board approve the meetings, the minutes of the agenda meeting held on December 19th, 2016.
I have a correction before we proceed.
Go ahead.
It says, President Downing arrived at 7:19, but we need to note that Sledi arrived at 6:34 PM because the meeting started at 6:34 PM because we had absences.
I was absent during the agenda meeting, yeah. I came in at the very end.
Right, so we only, we had to wait for the fourth person, so it should be noted why we started at 6:34 is because we had a late arrival.
Right.
That's it.
I have a motion as amended. Move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Essenza?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Abstain, I was late.
Mr. Claus?
Abstain.
Mr. Bidwell?
Abstain, I wasn't present.
I cannot carry that motion.
Yep.
Why not? Because Mr. Giordano's not here?
We only have three votes in here.
Mr. Subsea, can I vote yes on it?
You can vote yes on it if you have the ability from whatever observations are available to you that you could approve those minutes.
What would you advise?
If you're familiar enough with the information and you're comfortable voting on the information as being accurate, I could advise you that you and the else would look at it.
Okay, then would the motion carry now?
It would, yes.
Okay, then I'll change my vote to yes.
Yes, ma'am. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the private session number one held on December 19th, 2016?
Move. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Essenza?
I'm voting no because I was not present for the entire meeting, and I had also asked for an amendment to that minutes to reflect why I was asked to leave that meeting.
Mrs. Downing?
I have to abstain because I was late. I didn't come until the end, very end.
Mr. Claus?
I have to abstain.
Uh, Mr. Bidwell?
I will abstain, I was not present.
Okay, so we can't carry that motion? Yeah. Motion to carry.
Next time.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on the appropriate attachment held on December 19th, 2016?
What about the private session number two? Did you do that one?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. Regular meeting, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Essenza?
Wait, I'm not clear, are we on private session number two?
Regular.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting? We're holding over both private sessions?
No, just voting on this right now.
Just voting on this one, okay, regular meeting, yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Abstain.
Mr. Bidwell?
Abstain.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the private session number two held on December 19th, 2016.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Sledi?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Essenza?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Abstain.
Mr. Bidwell?
Abstain.
Okay, uh, give an opportunity for the student representatives to speak, please. Who's going to go first?
I'll go.
Okay.
The freshman class, um, will be holding a fundraiser at Surf Taco the night of the Talent Show, which is February 15th. Sophomores are selling chairs and seat pads. If you're interested in purchasing one, see Ms. Taskin. Juniors, juniors are working on the Powder Cut theme, which is going to be May 6th. The junior prom is May 12th at the Holiday Inn in Manahawken. The charities that all grades can participate in is the Polar Bear Plunge, and it's going to be Disney themed. Seniors in the fall raise $300 for Save the Children. The senior sweatshirts have arrived and will be handed out soon. Extras are ordered. T-shirt designs are going to be accepted after midterms. If anyone is interested in submitting a t-shirt design to Ms. DePaula. Raffle tickets are in the process of being printed and will be sold as a fundraiser. And the prom committee has picked out sashes and crowns and is currently looking for senior songs. The executive board, we had Battle of the Classes the week before winter break, and it was a huge success. The winners were the juniors who took first place, and they got $1,500. The sophomores, second place, $903. Seniors took third place and got $451, and freshmen won fourth place and got $150. All the money was raised from our t-shirt sales. On January 11th, SGA members attended the Student Council Winter Convention at TCNJ and learned about new fundraisers and school activities from other student governments, and we are excited to implement them this year and into next year. January 13th, SGA sponsored a jean day for staff, and $442 was collected for the Student Reading Committee. The Talent Show is our next big fundraiser, which is going to be February 15th from 6 to 9, and the show is $5 to get in. Our next SGA meeting is February 8th, and officers will also be attending from 8th grade orientation, which is February 9.
Great, thank you. Kylie?
Um, Ken Joe Sorano, or Jacob Sorano, the January Unsung Hero, please join me at the podium. January's Matthew Blum Unsung Hero Award recipient is awarded to the deserving Jacob Sorano. Jacob is an outstanding athlete as well as a high achieving student. Jacob tries his hardest in all of his schoolwork and maintains his spot on the honor roll. In football, he always tries his very hardest for himself and most importantly, his team. He's a very positive student who could put a smile on anyone's face. Jacob is an active member in SGA and in which he always voices his opinion, gives suggestions, and helps wherever needed. As well as being a member of SGA, Jacob is also involved in the Interact Club where he gives back to his community and people in need. Jacob Sorano is a very intelligent, hardworking, and caring student who gives everything he does his best effort. It is for these reasons that Jacob Sorano has been selected to receive January Matthew Unsung Hero Award. Congratulations.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Mr. Craig Wiggly.
Thank you, President Bidwell. Welcome, great crowd here tonight. Thank you for coming. It's a little, the weather's not too nice, but it's good to see people come out to the board meeting. Before we go to our Student of the Month, if you haven't noticed, we do have a special group of people here with us tonight also that are wearing special uniforms from our township and some dignitaries. We're going to have Mr. Brandis at this point do a special presentation for some of our notable heroes in our town and recognize them as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggly and the board. Like Mr. Wiggly said, it is a special night tonight. A lot of the time we get to celebrate the accomplishments of our students, which is a very nice thing to do, but tonight, we welcome the Lacey Township Fire Department and the Lacey Township Police Department in celebrating the accomplishments of our community members and those who serve us, you know, outside the building, outside school here. On November 25th, at 12:06 AM, they received multiple phone calls that there's a structured fire in Lacey Township. First responders, the Lacey Township Fire Department responded along with the Lacey Township Police Department. Many individuals were involved, but especially three individuals that were graduates here from Lacey Township High School. Those are Officer Anthony Sarno, Officer Christopher Myler, and James E. Parker Jr., who was part of the Lacey Township Fire Department. The most thing to realize is without their quick response, without them running into a burning building to go and help someone who's trapped, a life would have been lost. A Lacey Township community members' life would have been lost without their heroic actions. And we're certainly proud as a district, I'm proud as a building leader to be able to stand here and recognize them tonight. I'd like to have them come up and be recognized by myself with a certificate of valor and be up with the Board of Education and the Superintendent Schools, along with their officers and their chiefs for a, for a picture and to receive their certificates of valor. So, thank you for your service, and please join us.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations.
Everybody ready? Count of three, one, two, three. One more. And one more.
Hey, chief, thank you.
Thanks, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
That was wonderful, by the way. Mr. Brandis, we talked about that. I know that, um, previously, I know Ms. McAvoy would do a showcase of alumni. I envision our alumni coming back. Sometimes I know, well, we did write up on them, it was very good, they couldn't be here, but the virtual thing of them having in place and speaking about them is great, so. As our alumni do great things, we want to bring them back and showcase to the board. I think the public to see it live is really impactful. But from here, we have our future alumni, our Students of the Month that are succeeding and really shining in the high school. Mr. Brandis is going to introduce at this time.
Thank you. I'd first like to introduce the Senior of the Month, Brielle Galani. If you could join me up on the podium, please.
Getting down.
Good afternoon. I'm sitting here with Brielle Galani, our Senior of the Month for January. To here to celebrate her accomplishments and everything she does here at Lacey Township High School is Taylor Risley.
Hi, I'm Taylor Risley, and I'm here with Senior of the Month Brielle Galani. How does it make you feel being chosen as Senior of the Month?
I feel very honored.
You should, it's a great accomplishment. What kind of activities do you participate in inside and outside of school?
I was captain of the hockey this season. I play lacrosse, I'm in SGA, Interact, NHS, um, I work outside of school.
I work at McDonald's, I'm a group chief there. I enjoy how you're Brielle's my boss, but what teacher has had the biggest impact in your high school career?
Coach Delanto.
And why is that?
Um, she's a mentor on and off the field. She's like my biggest supporter since I've been alive, and she always deserves me.
Brielle Galani is a leader not only on the field, as a captain in two seasons, but she also is a leader in the classroom and also on the all days. I'm very happy for her, and it is well deserved.
What are your future plans after graduation?
I'm going to East Trafford University in my nursing program.
That sounds exciting. Congratulations. And now, here from Evan Alwani with the male Senior of the Month, Joe.
We're going to take just a moment to celebrate Brielle and her accomplishments and be recognized by the Board of Education.
First, let's tell the truth, how tough is Coach Delanto?
Oh, tough.
Thanks. I'm captain of Lacey Township Board of Education, it's our honor to present you. Congratulations, we're very proud.
I'd also like to congratulate Brielle's mothers in attendance tonight. It's a great accomplishment for your daughter, congratulations. At this time, I'd like to call down Joseph Nagy, our Senior of the Month, to be celebrated along with, and also like to congratulate his parents as well on this remarkable accomplishment. Joseph, come in now.
Hi, I'm Evan Alwani alongside Junior Senior of the Month, Joe Nagy, how are you?
I'm good, how are you? I'm doing well. So, can you tell us a little bit when you first found out that you wanted to work, how did you feel? I was pretty excited. Okay, simple enough. What company do you love with, inside school? I'm at NHS, where we do a lot of tutoring, community events. I volunteer at my father's nursing home. What about outside of school, anything else? Um, sports, yeah, I'm part of, I teach us swim, and yeah. What teacher do you think has the biggest impact on you in your school career? Pick one, teacher. Pick one, yeah. It's hard, but maybe, Sarah, yeah. I'll go with Mr. Cruzon or Mr. Sotero. A lot of people picked that, is there any reason why you picked that? They started the STEM Academy, so that's had a large effect on where I'm going to school, what I'm doing after school, and overall how I've developed as a person.
Congratulations, Joe Nagy, on winning Student of the Month. Couldn't be more proud of you. Overall, great achievement. Things I'm really proud of most is your overall work ethic, and then congratulations once again.
Well, can you tell us a little bit about where you're going? I'm going to Duke University. That's great, and what do you do studying there? I'm a, I major in physics. Are you excited about that? Yes. Well, congratulations, and congratulations on winning Senior of the Month.
Ah, it's going to be a Tar deal, huh? Congratulations, they have the Lacey Township Board of Education, I'd like to present you this one. Good luck, ladies.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, Mr. and Mrs. Nagy, congratulations as well for the accomplishment, not only being Senior of the Month, but being recognized and accepted into Duke is a wonderful accomplishment. Congratulations.
Moving on, at this time, we're going to do a short presentation from our Assistant Principal of the High School, Mr. Tim Dowd, in regard to our Leadership Academy of Humanities that's being developed at the high school.
Make a motion that we're training our, we move one times. Sorry to make you get up again. You know, it's only 75 slides, so, you know, don't stand up too long.
We had a preview the other night.
I just want to say thanks for having me tonight. Being relatively new to the high school, I've been there for a couple of months now, but working with Mr. Brandis, the other administrative leaders in the school, our students, our faculty, it's an exciting place to come to work every day. And with the prospect of starting a Leadership Academy of Humanities just makes it all the more worthwhile. So, I'd like to talk to you tonight about what we have planned for this in its, in its early stages. We have recognizing Joe tonight and his achievement, and talking about the STEM Academy. What we're trying to do is produce a counterpart for that STEM Academy in the Humanities. And so, we'd like to take those AD-bound students who have a predilection for the Humanities and give them a foundation and education for 21st century thinking and global citizenship. In this kind of program, we think that the validity, the power that would come through it is having a group of students working together in a cohort in collaborative efforts in a curriculum that is taught by teachers who are in, who are planning these lessons together and, and having a shared vision of exactly where these students are going through their four years here at LTHS. Right now, as we have mapped out the curriculum, students that take full advantage of this could earn up to 39 college credits before they exit high school. So, why invest in leadership in the Humanities? And I think, I think we can all sort of see that information is more prevalent than ever. They say that every single day, there is more text, there's more reading material produced by the human race than any other day before it. And so, I think that it is our job as educators to make sure that our students know how to interact with this information. So, specifically, they will receive a rigorous education that sets high expectations for growth while showing commitment to assessments like the PARC. And it is well founded that employers and colleges alike are looking for individuals who can demonstrate these skills in communication, collaboration, and leadership. So, here's a basic map, and I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. From where you're sitting, and now that I'm looking at this in this big screen, the top three classes there for the ninth grade are new classes that we're proposing, Humanities, World English Honors, and Humanities, World History Honors. These are classes that will be taught and co-planned by an English teacher and a history teacher that will work together and have common planning time built into their schedule so that they can plan a lesson where students are working on essentially the same material every day that they have these classes. For freshman year, you can tell, if you're familiar with our high school curriculum, that it's not a severe departure from what's already being taught in world history and a sort of survey of world English. But we can make this curriculum stronger in the cohort model and the collaboration element. We also have an elective there, Leadership and the Humanities. So, if we think about this, we want our students to be college and career ready by the time they leave here, that they have to have other skills more than just getting good grades and working toward good test scores. But this is the kind of elective class that we want our students to generate skills in digital media, publishing, authentic assignments, project-based learning, and this is kind of the playground a little bit, where they get to take what they're learning in their world humanities subjects and sort of apply it to what happened today in that class. So, there's a little bit of flexibility there with the standards that we want to hit all the way through the year. 10th grade continues again with a similar focus on what we have already, but again, kind of tweaking these elements in our curriculum to make American literature and American history, both humanities classes in the honors track for, for students to get a foundation in those things, again, teachers working together, and also continuing with that Leadership and Humanities elective for those 21st century skills. Then moving on, these are projected. Moving on to the 11th grade and the 12th grade, you can see that there's a lot of similarities between what we have now and what students will be taking in the future in this academy, but we're providing them with a specific pathway to achieve AP and college credit through dual enrollment courses and also that AP option. So, AP Language and Composition, which is at its core a writing and rhetoric course, pairing nicely with AP US History, offering AP Psychology at the junior level, and investigating future courses like AP Sociology, because after all, it is an education in the Humanities. But those are other classes there, like we saw in 9th grade and 10th grade, that students would be taking anyway. So, the cohort model works for several subjects, and then the students are in general population for whatever science class they may take, whatever math class they may take, at what, you know, at whatever level, if it's college prep honors or some AP course. At 12th grade, the one that I'd really like to highlight here is a, an idea of Global 21st Century Colloquium Project. So, students working in this class for the whole year have an opportunity for independent investigation under the care of an educator, a panel of teachers, where they're taking what they've learned in their freshman, sophomore, and junior years, experiencing that Leadership and Humanities elective course for three years on how to present, how to use digital media, and investigate something that's of interest to them. I think for a college or career-bound student, that a course like this, the Global 21st Century Colloquium Project, is a real cornerstone for them to be able to go into the workforce or to have a key resume item for college, be able to talk about that in a college interview on a college resume. And of course, we have dual enrollment options in many of these subjects, and also the AP courses that we have here, like AP Literature, or courses that we would seek to acquire in the future, like AP European History or AP Government. Here's a little bit of a target date timeline. So, by next month, we'd like to complete the teacher selection process and start standard alignment. By March, we'd like to have selection of our students. And so, with this, we're looking to take our current LTHS 9th grade students and enroll them in this program for their 10th grade. So, next year, we would have a rollout for our 10th grade students, and then in the following years, you can kind of see down there in January 2018, that we would have 9th graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders in this program going forward. And then skipping ahead for the sake of time in June of 2020, the Leadership Academy of Humanities at Lacey Township High School would graduate its first senior class cohort. So, I just wanted to conclude by saying... From where you're sitting, and now that I'm looking at this on this big screen, the top three classes there for the ninth grade are new classes that we're proposing: Humanities, World English Honors, and Humanities, World History Honors. These are classes that will be taught and co-planned by an English teacher and a history teacher that will work together and have common planning time built into their schedule so that they can plan a lesson where students are working on essentially the same material every day that they have these classes. For freshman year, you can tell, if you're familiar with our high school curriculum, that it's not a severe departure from what's already being taught in world history and a sort of survey of world English. But we can make this curriculum stronger in the cohort model and the collaboration element. We also have an elective there, Leadership and the Humanities. So, if we think about this, if we want our students to be college and career-ready by the time they leave here, that they have to have other skills more than just getting good grades and working toward good test scores. But this is the kind of elective class that we want our students to generate skills in digital media, publishing, authentic assignments, project-based learning. And this is kind of the playground a little bit, where they get to take what they're learning in their world humanities subjects and sort of apply it to what happened today in that class. So, there's a little bit of flexibility there with the standards that we want to hit all the way through the year. Tenth grade continues again with a similar focus on what we have already, but again, kind of tweaking these elements in our curriculum to make American literature and American history both humanities classes in the honors track for, for students to get a foundation in those things. Again, teachers working together, and also continuing with that Leadership and Humanities elective for those 21st century skills. Then, moving on, these are projected. Moving on to the eleventh grade and the twelfth grade, you can see that there's a lot of similarities between what we have now and what students will be taking in the future in this academy, but we're providing them with a specific pathway to achieve AP and college credit through dual enrollment courses and also that AP option. So, AP Language and Composition, which is at its core a writing and rhetoric course, pairing nicely with AP US History, offering AP Psychology at the junior level, and investigating future courses like AP Sociology, because after all, it is an education in the humanities. But those are other classes there, like we saw in ninth grade and tenth grade, that students would be taking anyway. So, the cohort model works for several subjects, and then the students are in general population for whatever science class they may take, whatever math class they may take, you know, at whatever level, if it's college prep honors or some AP course. At twelfth grade, the one that I'd really like to highlight here is a, an idea of Global 21st Century Colloquium Project. So, students working in this class for the whole year have an opportunity for independent investigation under the care of an educator, a panel of teachers, where they're taking what they've learned in their freshman, sophomore, and junior years, experiencing that Leadership and Humanities elective course for three years on how to present, how to use digital media, and investigate something that's of interest to them. I think for a college or career-bound student, that a course like this, the Global 21st Century Colloquium Project, is a real cornerstone for them to be able to go into the workforce or to have a key resume item for college, be able to talk about that in a college interview on a college resume. And of course, we have dual enrollment options in many of these subjects, and also the AP courses that we have here, like AP Literature, or courses that we would seek to acquire in the future, like AP European History or AP Government. Here's a little bit of a target date timeline. So, by next month, we'd like to complete the teacher selection process and start standard alignment. By March, we'd like to have selection of our students. And so, with this, we're looking to take our current LTHS ninth-grade students and enroll them in this program for their tenth grade. So, next year, we would have a rollout for our tenth-grade students. And then, in the following years, you can kind of see down there in January 2018 that we would have ninth graders, tenth graders, and eleventh graders in this program going forward. And then, skipping ahead for the sake of time, in June of 2020, the Leadership Academy of Humanities at Lacey Township High School would graduate its first senior class cohort. So, I just wanted to conclude by saying, there's a lot of really exciting things going on at the high school. We're looking to tap into the amazing student body that we have and the faculty resources that we have. And I appreciate your time allowing me to show this to you.
Kylie and Jacqueline, I probably should've given you guys the opportunity to go home. I probably have a ton of homework, so if you guys would like to exit early, you're more than welcome to. I only said Kylie and Jacqueline.
She got a lot of homework to do.
Good night.
to date. I do want to, before we finish up, I want to thank Mr. Dowd for his fine presentation, and Mr. Brandis, and Dr. Clark, and our district supervisors that have been working behind the scenes to start to put together some of these unique opportunities here at the high school. That doesn't happen without also the collaboration with our great teachers at the high school, and actually, we'll eventually include our middle schools, we have that as our feeder up. So, and this is the tip of the iceberg. There is work being done and projected for further dual enrollment opportunities where kids can earn possibly an associate's degree before leaving the high school, is a goal. We're working towards making that a plan that works. But there's, there's a lot of great things and opportunities at the high school. I think when people sit back and they look at a curriculum or a course of studies on a piece of paper, that's what it is, it's on a piece of paper. It takes the people behind it, it takes the supervision, it takes our great teachers to make it come to life. And that's where we're at, we're at a turning point, I believe. And that presentation is just for what you can expect and more to come. So, I think that the board, some people saw it in curriculum presentation, but I think it was great to have a full board see it and know that people are working hard to really push the envelope and give our kids the best opportunity. So, thank you again for that, I appreciate it. I want to just, I do want to thank, reps aren't here, but I think it's great to hear from them every month, to hear the great news they share, and the news that's going on at the high school, and all the service that our kids are performing. Also, I want to just recognize the beautiful artwork up here. We have Junior Amber Madoski's Wonderful Winter Scene, and we have Jessica Radomski's very unique sketch of a camera that has on the lens, it's an eighty-one millimeter lens which represents the opening of the high school, and the aperture setting is a one-seventeen-seventeen setting depicting the date. Just think it's very creative, and the work, I think it's been a nice addition to the, to the board meeting, to see the hard work our kids do for the covers of our superintendent's report and the agenda. I think it's important that we also recognize the hard work of our Students of the Month, Joe and Brielle, and our unsung hero Jacob. I think it's, it continues to be a testament to our kids' hard work and the recognition that the board and the high school are continuing to support. One area I know that I always like to mention is our middle school Students of the Month, because we hope to see them here as high schoolers, and we have the four of them. Students of the Month from the high school are seventh grade Madeline Zek, seventh grade Christopher Papa, eighth grade Allison Ward, and eighth grade Shane Collins. So, we expect them to be here one day in front of the cameras getting their awards. And I want to also just thank again Mr. Brandis for inviting our alumni back in. I think it was great to have them here and recognize our people that are keeping us safe every day and night here in Lacey. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigley. Committee reports. Finance, Rob Close.
Mr. Bidwell, we have Mr. Dr. Clark.
Oh, I just forgot, Mr. Dr. Clark again.
Yes, I know, I know my report's so exciting.
We have, I know, we have the HIV grade report that has to be annually shared. Thank you, Dr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Wigley. Before I begin my report, I just, I too wanted to thank Mr. Dowd, he did an exceptional job at our Curriculum Committee meeting, and really excited about what's to come. And I know that what Mr. Dowd presented tonight is just the tip of the iceberg of more exciting things, greater exciting things that are going to be happening at the high school, so we're looking forward to that. The report that I am presenting tonight is the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act District and School Assessment. So, I presented on this report back in September, and this is the process by which all of the schools do a self-assessment on how well each of the schools are delivering the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. In other words, how well are we addressing harassment, intimidation, and bullying? And so, back in September, I reported the scores of those self-assessments, and then what happens is that the Department of Education certifies the scores. Once the Department of Education does that, we then are required to post the results on the district website as well as the websites of each of the schools. So, I can tell you that the Department of Education has certified the results, and even though I share them in public in September, I'm going to share them again. The maximum score that each of the schools could have received is a seventy-eight. The high school's score received a score of seventy-five. The middle school received a score of seventy-three. Mill Pond Elementary received a score of seventy-five. Lenoka Harbor Elementary received a score of seventy-five. Forkett River Elementary School received a score of seventy-two, and Cedar Creek's score was seventy-seven. So, the district average score was seventy-five out of seventy-eight. That's a score that has increased steadily since we started completing these self-assessments. But a lot of people have asked why the scores vary from school to school, and the simple answer to that is that these are self-assessments. And the results will vary depending on how well the school's, school's safety team assesses itself on how well it's delivering various programs, and so that's why there is some variation. And so, the scores do typically differ. But I think we're all in agreement when we say that we're proud of our scores, and it just says to us as a district and a community that we're striving to improve our HIV programs, our approaches, our initiatives, and we're continually striving to ensure that our programs are meaningful and that they're targeted, and they're just not programs just to have. I'd like to say that our scores will continue to improve, but we're pretty close to that, that mark already. But it's one of the many things that I do believe we are doing well, and I think the board will agree with me on that. But, you know, hey, there's always room for improvement, and I expect to see that we'll continue to look for ways to improve our scores. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Wigley, for the opportunity to present that.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Clark. Good luck. Thank you. I would like to just go through the community reports real quickly. Finance, Rob Close is the chair, if you could just give us a summary of what occurred this month?
Okay. Good conversation. We discussed a few topics: facilities, finance, and budget, and food services. As far as facilities go, we collected some RFPs for an architect of record, and also made the decision to send out an RFP for an engineer of record, too, just to have for some of the projects that we have or need. Finance, we, we had conversation about the budget, the tentative budget should be coming out soon for us to get a look at. And then, food service, basically, we're making some progress towards the goal of keeping it in-house and working it out ourselves.
Thank you. Curriculum.
Hey, we met on Monday, January ninth. Myself, Mrs. De Senza, Mr. Giordano, and Dr. Clark, and Mr. Wigley also joined us. I want to chime in with everyone else and thank Mr. Dowd for a wonderful presentation at Curriculum. We saw the same presentation you saw, and it's just so exciting to see that another academy is coming to Lacey. So, thank you for all your efforts, and good luck with your endeavors. We also had a presentation by Julie Chikarone, Supervisor of High School Guidance. She presented the committee with information regarding the changes that have taken place in high school guidance and her future ideas for improvement in that department. We talked about new course offerings for next year. We also discussed the Algebra I textbook. We talked about sustainable jersey for schools. Dr. Clark informed the committee that District Supervisor Michelle Amos will be the Sustainable Jersey for Schools lead, and she'll be meeting with the school green teams to finalize expenditures for the PSNG Sustainable Jersey for Schools small grants. Say that three times, yes. We discussed random drug testing at the middle school, and just other topics. Red Night Out scheduled for March tenth, please mark that on your calendar, I hope you can come to that. And the meeting took about two and a half hours, it was a very long meeting, but very productive. Thank you, Mr. Bidwell.
Thank you. Policy, Mr. Siletty, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also met Monday, June ninth. We discussed numerous topics. One topic in particular was possible options for transportation to students within a safety zone depending on distance and dangerous roads. This committee will be forming a focus group, including parents, to assist with feedback of concerns in this matter. We also are currently discussing the use of facilities as a possible revenue source, and we touched on the evacuation procedures, policies for students during foul weather evacuations, and revising the current policies to address these added measures. Other than that, that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Siletty. I would like to open the floor for public comment. Anybody have something they'd like to say? Seeing as none, I'm gonna close the floor and move on to board comments. Just keep it simple, we can move from right to left, we'll start with Ms. De Senza.
You sure you want to do that, okay?
We think you might have the most effects, so we'll start with you.
Yeah, that's a good consensus. Congratulations to Students of the Month, Joseph Nagy, and Brielle Delany, and unsung hero Jacob Serrano. I wish Joseph all the best at Duke, lots more hard work ahead with a physics major. On January eleventh, I attended the Parent Advisory Council meeting at the high school. It was very, very informative, and then I went to Cedar Creek PTA meeting where plans were discussed for their Coach Bingo Night fundraiser to be held on Saturday, February twenty-fifth at the high school. Doors open at 5:00 PM, please contact the school for tickets. This is the Cedar Creek PTA's largest fundraiser of the year. Congratulations to the fifty-one new inductees to the Edwin B. Salter Chapter of the National Honor Society. A beautiful solemn ceremony was held at the high school on January twelfth. Thank you for inviting the board to attend. I have a few numbers now for the public from the agenda on page thirty-nine, page thirteen of the Bills and Claims Report. A wire transfer payment today of one million eighty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars went out for the solar bond. Another one million one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars went for the district's share of benefit costs, and three million nine hundred twenty-eight thousand and nine hundred and seventy-four dollars went out for the payroll, and the employee contribution to benefits was two hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I'd like to thank Mr. Bidwell for reappointing me as the State Delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association. Mr. Morandi is the alternate, please feel free to tag along and may to the delegate assembly to observe the process. Mrs. Downing was assigned as county delegate, and Mr. Giordano is the alternate county And now, I'd like to offer my apologies to the voters of Lacey Township. While I was humbled to be elected to this position in November twenty-fourteen, my twenty-five months on this board have only confirmed what I really knew prior to being elected. This board is still somewhat dysfunctional, and it's no one person's fault. The real reason, I think, is because this is a very, very time-consuming position in order to provide proper oversight to the district, and if you hold a full-time job, it truly becomes a juggling act. While I do not have a full-time paid position, my current pressing family responsibilities have made this a juggling act for me sometimes, but I still meet my obligation to go to Trenton, attend delegate assemblies, went for some additional training, I talked to other board members throughout the state to compare notes, I attend the county school board meetings, and I went to NJSPA workshops in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. In three hundred and forty-eight days, I am looking forward to being a private citizen again. I attended nearly eighteen meetings to participate in LTEA negotiations in twenty fifteen. I have attended well over two hundred school events and meetings many times as the only board member present. I attended all my policy committee meetings except one in twenty-four months when I was on vacation. I just attended my first curriculum committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. I have attended all twenty-five monthly business meetings to date, and I am currently serving as chairperson for the Child Study Team negotiations. But I was recently told that if I had to step down as chair for the Child Study Team, that I would be shirking my responsibilities as a board member. I was very confused by that statement. I have put in more time in twenty-five months than the other six board members combined, except maybe for Mrs. McAvoy. I will honestly tell the taxpayers, your taxes will never go down or even remain level, it's just impossible. If I, as a board member, had to use the Open Public Records Act to obtain documents, you can only imagine what I've been up against. Someone once told me I was more effective as a private citizen, and I believe that now. The only thing I've gained here is a little inside knowledge, but I did get a lot of training and have many resources to refer to. I also want to let the board know, I did come here with an open mind and a complete willingness to be a team player. However, within a few months, I saw that wasn't going to be possible. And my apologies to anyone in the public that is upset about my Government Records Council complaint. We don't write the laws. As public officials, we are sworn to uphold the laws of the state of New Jersey, and that includes the Open Public Records Act. I'll tell everyone right here and now, the district ran up a legal tab on my complaint of around five thousand dollars, pitiful. More to follow at a later date, stay tuned. The district obviously had a transparency problem, and I want everyone to know, this is not a reflection at all from the present administration. The problem in my complaint stems from the previous administration. Thank you very much to all in attendance here tonight, your presence is very much appreciated. The next business meeting will also be on a Tuesday, February twenty-first. Thank you.
Mr. Morandi.
Being known, I want me to keep it nice and brief, but I'd like to thank Mr. De George, Mr. Wigley, and the rest of the work that take me under the wing, show me, shown me the ropes, and I'm looking forward to a very successful year. Tonight, I'd like to congratulate Jacob, the unsung hero, Joe, and Brielle, the senior in months. Also, you took away a little more thunder, I was honored to be here Thursday for the fifty-one inductees to the National Honor Society as a board member and as a father. So, that was pretty good. Last but not least, I saw something online today, they're a little short. Cedar Creek School has a blood drive tomorrow from ten to seven, and if you could go out and donate some blood, that would be great. Thanks, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. I'm gonna save you, Mr. Close, and go back to Mr. Siletty.
Thank you, President. Bidwell. Well, Happy New Year, everybody. I would like to recognize the Lacey Township High School Fishing Club for hosting their annual Fisherman's Flea Market on Saturday. Very well-organized event, I attended, and it appeared to be a great success, there was a lot of people there, pork and lamb was full, it looked like, hopefully they raise a bunch of money for the cause that they're, they're giving to. I just wanted to mention that tomorrow night, at Lacey Township Middle School, Winter Concert, Winter Concert is tomorrow night at the Lacey Township High School Auditorium, and what was tiring to me, I just heard when I was invited, that there's a hundred and twenty members in the chorus and eighty members in the band, so that's two hundred of our students in the middle school will be there tomorrow night performing. I wanted to thank the police and fire members in attendance tonight, and thank them for protecting and serving this community, sometimes that goes unnoticed, and especially for their rescue efforts on the day of that fire. Also, Jacob and Brielle, and Joseph for unsung hero and Students of the Month, and also the, congratulations to the National Honor Society inductees the other night. And I also want to thank Mr. Dowd for his presentation and the hard work that he put into the Leadership Academy of Humanities. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siletty. Mrs. Downing.
Hey, I'll make it very short, I just want to congratulate Joseph and Brielle for Students of the Month, quite an honor, and the unsung hero Jacob Serrano, who, as I've always said, that's the award that I love the most because...
that's the award that I love the most because they're the newers that just never look for recognition, and they do such a great job, so congratulations. I want to congratulate the staff. On page twenty-four, you'll see that several of them are advancing their careers, their degrees from Masters to Masters plus thirty, BA, BA plus twenty, so I want to congratulate them and acknowledge their efforts. It's always good to see our teachers and staff advancing their degrees, great job. As everyone has already said, I want to also say kudos to our fire department and our police department. We're very lucky in Lacey to have the departments that we have. Thrilled to see Chief Devella here, who I think is going to do a wonderful job as chief, and just thank you for their hard work. They do it all the time, they save lives, and they just do it because that's what they want to do. And so, thank you. And also, thank you to the donations that we have listed tonight. Thompson chiropractic is on there again, seems like he's, they're on there every month, they're always donating to our schools, so we appreciate that and thank them very much, and have a great night, thank you.
Can I just make a correction? That concert is Thursday night, I'm sorry, I made a mistake on that, that's Thursday night. Oh, yeah.
Checking my calendar.
Yeah, it's tomorrow, it's Thursday night, not tomorrow night.
Thank you, Ms. Downing.
You're welcome.
Vice President Clowes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As always, I'll keep it short. I mean, everybody's kind of said everything already, just keep saying it over and over again. But to me, the important pieces to kind of keep saying is congratulations to the Students of the Month and our unsung hero. I wish we could have a lot more of those, you know, maybe twice a month, we should start doing this. And also thank you to the firemen and the police officers, without them, who knows what this town will be like, but they're important, they do their job, and we appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. I still have a few comments for tonight. First, kind of the good news that we all saw today, I mean, we had Students of the Month, obviously we have that every single month, and it's, it never ceases to amaze me what type of students we're able to put out through, through this district. Duke University studying physics, are you kidding me? I mean, that's, that's so impressive. Obviously, all of our students are impressive in one way or the other. We have police and firefighters here that were graduates of our school that went rushing into a burning building to go save people. We've got a Humanities Academy that we're starting up last, what was it, Tuesday night? We had the National Honor Society induction that I was at, so, I mean, it just blows my mind, the stuff that we're able to accomplish here as a team, and I'm very, very proud to be a part of it. We had a bomb scare this past month, I forget the exact date, and we didn't do perfectly, but what I really want to recognize and appreciate is the way the administration looked at what happened, kind of went back and got some key learnings out of it, and rather than, you know, either defending their actions or, you know, having excuses why, they took all the information in, they made adjustments, and they're going to change the protocol moving forward. And that's what a good business, and that's what a good school district does, is they learn from, from experience, and they, they change and make, make the proper adjustments so that it's better in the future. So, I wanted to make sure that we, we let everybody know that, that you guys did really, really good work on that, and I know it's not an easy thing to deal with, certainly, you don't expect something like that. More hard work is coming in the few, you know, in, in the months to come. Obviously, we're, we're very quickly getting close to budgeting season, and I think there's a few things that, you know, we need to keep an eye on. As you may or may not know, there's affordable housing that is currently being built, I believe families with students are going to be moving in in March. That's going to be a pretty significant challenge for the school district, primarily because we do not receive any tax dollars from those residents, and we will obviously then need to educate the students. And so, we're going to have to kind of figure out a way to make that work, and we are elbows-deep in trying to work on that as we speak, and more information to come. Transportation challenges come along with that, I think you heard both from the finance chair as well as the policy chair, that, again, another project that we're, we're deep into and trying to solve some of the challenges that we face in order to try and be responsible to our taxpayers, but at the same time, provide the services that we need to provide to our, our families and our students within the town. So, other than that, I think that kind of gives you an update on what's going on with our board, and I'd like to move forward on the agenda. New business, I'd like to get a motion for items A through L, please.
Move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Siletty.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
I have a nay on item A for item number two-six-oh-five-two-seven, and I'll be abstaining on item number two-oh-six-one-hundred, and no on item B, and yes on all the rest.
Yes.
Mr. Clowes.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Donations, please bear with me, I'd like to read these because they, these are very generous organizations and people. To the district from Thompson Healthcare, holiday gift basket for all the schools and the central office in the amount of seventeen hundred and fifty dollars from the Lacey Township. Transportation Department, twenty-dollar gift cards, four of them in the amount of eighty dollars. Thompson Healthcare, again, children's gifts, fifty dollars. Transportation Department, twenty-five dollars worth of gift cards for Lenoka Harbor School, five of them in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And once again, Thompson Healthcare, a hundred and twenty-five water bottles, tangerines, and granola bars for the Marathon Club, value of a hundred dollars. All total a donation of twenty-one hundred and five dollars this month. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mr. Siletty.
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Clowes.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. Item three, programs and curriculum. A, can I have a motion for student teacher placements, observation, practice rooms, field work, and internships?
Move. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Siletty.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Clowes.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. Item four, professional days and workshops, can I have a motion for item A, please?
Move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Siletty.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Clowes.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. Item four, certificate of personnel, items A through H, please.
Move. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Siletty.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Clowes.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. Item six, supported non-certificated staff personnel, items A through D, can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes, and congratulations to, to retirement.
Mr. Siletty.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Clowes.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion, request the board move, hold on, move that the board approve the extension of the suspension of student number nine-zero-zero-eight-three-seven until the next regular board meeting.
Move. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Siletty.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Clowes.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
And also ask the board to approve a motion to place employee number five-two-five-two-five-zero on administrative leave with pay effective January seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, pending further action by the board.
Move. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Siletty.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Clowes.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?